We're gonna bring this meeting to order. This time I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, June first, twenty twenty-three County Commissioner Meet. Commissioner Ted Murphy will do the invocation and lead the pledge.
Bow your heads, please. Lord, we just want to thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for the rain that we've been experiencing here in North Florida. And Lord, we just want to ask you for your guidance today to help us as commissioners, leaders of the community, try to make the best decision that affects each and every citizen in our community. Lord, we just want to take a special time to reach out and ask for protection for all those that serve throughout this world, to protect us, to enable us to come together here today and be able to have such meetings in the public. And Lord, I want you to reach out to the families here locally, Lord, that lost loved ones this week that's affected in one way or another. Many, many people in this community, we just ask that you reach out, put your hand upon them, guide them through this loss of time, and do the best that you can for them. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the government of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, endless, and strong.
David, do we have any additions or deletions?
None that I know of, sir.
Okay. Got a motion to approve, get a second? Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. One thing I am gonna do is I'm gonna move Columbia Youth Football to the top of the agenda. Jeff is here to present that, and he's got a funeral he needs to get to, so we're gonna move that to the to the top. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
The move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adopt consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Hey Jeff, if you want to come up at this time.
I'm right here, ready to go.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, sir.
The fellow we lost, you know, we lost Hayward Christie, and Jeff is a big supporter of the football program too. And I just want to say, being there yesterday and seeing those students and the people, just the people that loved him. He was a tough-love guy like most of us sitting up here are. And I just want to send a thanks to the family and to him of how much he did for the kids and for the program for Columbia County. If you had ten like him, you wouldn't have no problem sports, nowhere in the county. So I just want to say, I appreciate Hayward Christie and his family, and we're sure gonna miss him. Sure gonna miss him.
He was a great asset in Columbia County for many years, I agree.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah, I mean, super loss. There's no other way to say it. I got to that funeral home last night at ten minutes after the visitation started, and the parking lot was packed. People was outside the door, and I saw the way that, and talked to some people, you know, the way he had touched their lives, whether either through playing in a league, coaching with him, officiating. Just an unbelievable guy. But one of the things we want to talk about is, and we've had some discussions before. Okay. Is about the county taking over the Columbia, not Columbia Youth Football Association, but Little League Football as a whole. So we could go back to being a booster organization, which is what we really originally started as, to help provide, you know, extra funding. We fundraised, provide scholarships for kids that couldn't afford to play. But given just the world we live in today, the people that are busy are busy, but, you know, where we used to run a hundred percent on volunteers, you know, we don't have that luxury anymore. I mean, we have to pay somebody to take up money. We have to pay somebody to run the concession stand. We have to pay our officials. We have to pay police officer, you know, I mean, some things are just a given expense, but that being said, we just don't have the manpower, you know? And so my question, and again, I've had these discussions with Mr. Kraus. Me and Commissioner Williams have talked about it before. Is, you know, where do we want to go with this? Obviously, we provide a service, if you want to call it that, to approximately five hundred kids every year. That's between football players and cheerleaders. But, you know, we struggle sometimes just to find enough coaches, much less to find people to do all the other things that go into making it happen that nobody really ever sees, you know? That schedule doesn't get made because it just got made, you know what I mean? Somebody has to sit down, figure out the schedule, figure out the time, and figure out what days we're gonna play. Figure out who's gonna take up the gate. Again, figure out who's gonna order the food for the concession stand, you know? Unfortunately, that was one of the things Hayward did, and, you know, again, he's gonna be sorely missed, and he kept all our books. So you know, and our books were always straight and to the point and to the penny. Now, Michael Christie has said he would step in and at least help us for the year to get through. I don't have, you know, I'm kind of a little unprepared, so to speak, because I don't have a budget in front of me to tell you exactly, you know, what we project it will cost to run the league. We're just kind of at a loss of where we want to go with this. I mean, me and Mario are pretty much the two left. Terry Phillips, Gary Free. Gary has always handled our officials, or has the last few years anyhow. Terry's always helped us. But, you know, we're all getting older too, and, you know, they got kids and grandkids and, you know, other things, and, you know, we've been doing it for years, and the game of football in this town, and I've said it a million times, and I know we've done a lot for other sports, but the game of football has provided more opportunities for kids out of our community than any other sport in this county. You look at the guys we put in the NFL, you look at the guys that have got free college educations because that's what they did. You know, we've got some baseball guys to get scholarships. We've got some soccer people to get scholarships and softball. But if you add up all the scholarships and all the opportunities that have came from playing the game of football in Columbia County, we'll dwarf them all combined. A lot of these kids, it's their only opportunity to get out, to have, you know, a different life than what they were accustomed to.
So Jeff, what do you see, what, how do you see the future of football in Columbia County? I mean, do you see it, is the county running it completely, or?
Well, and that goes back to, you know, I don't know, again, what everybody's thought is on recreation anymore, you know? I mean, obviously, I believe in recreation all the way around because I believe it provides an opportunity. You know, we get into economic development. If we don't have good schools and opportunities for our kids to participate in programs, it's kind of hard to bring people here when their kids don't have anything to do, or, you know, they don't like schools, you know, or what's going on in schools. So if we want to bring those kind of people here, we've got to have the best of the best. And we've always done a pretty good job on our end of running our league. I'm just, we're running out of people to run it. You know?
I guess we need to know what we need.
Back in the old days, the city and county ran football. And they had a booster club behind it, but before it went over, changed over, the Recreation Department ran football.
Yeah, the city, the City's Rec Department ran football, and then
And we are, and it was a joint city-county endeavor to do so. And Jeff is right, you know, it's just hard to, it's not like it, like, I coached for thirty-five years. But you don't, you don't have that breed out there anymore that does that.
No, I mean, it's the, it's the new world, and, you know, I'm pure commissioner of Murphy, seen it in baseball, you know, the guys like, you know, God knows, he did plenty at baseball over twenty-plus years. Those people aren't here anymore. Everybody wants to be involved as long as their child's involved, but as soon as the child don't want to play the sport no more, or they age out, and, you know, they're gone because they're following their kid. Guys like me that, you know, I coached my kids, and then I took a few years off with them, and then I went right back to coaching because I just love doing it and helping kids. But you know, I don't know if our world too busy, or everybody's on TikTok.
Too many phones, too many cell phones.
Yeah. But the volunteer base is not anywhere near where it used to be.
Have you tried to hire anybody lately?
Oh, yeah.
Well, that may be a problem also, even hiring somebody, so
I agree.
There's a problem everywhere.
No, no, I agree.
You know, so I'm not even saying that that's gonna solve the problem of the county taking it over, trying to hire somebody. If you do, then it's gonna cost.
Well, you know, there's two schools of thought. There's one, if the county takes it over with the Rec Department and they run it, and we go back to a booster organization. And then there's the other school of thought. You know, we may can run it for another year, two years, but we're gonna have to have some more funding because I gotta pay people to do things I used to didn't have to pay people to do.
David, how much do we fund the football program now?
So there's two points I'd like to make. Currently, I believe it's seventeen thousand's in the budget that we give them every year. Mario, the other day presented to you what he thought it would take to run the football program. The other thing I wanted to point out is if you're talking about fall football, you're gonna have to fund a good portion of it in the current year because it's kind of time-sensitive if you're gonna get registration and equipment and everything in order in time to have fall football. So I'm assuming you're coming to us now because it's time to get started.
Right. Go ahead.
Jeff, what types of money is balancing y'all's account now?
That's a good question because I can't tell you because, I mean, I went and I could deposit money because we had a local gentleman pass away, Brooks Etheridge, and his family asked in lieu, or asked in lieu of flowers to send donations to the Columbia Youth Football Association. And I can't remember total how much it was. It was three or four thousand dollars over that we got collected, and I went and put it in the bank, but I'm not on the account. Hayward handled all that. So that's what I'm saying, the time and all this is kind of weird because I couldn't tell you what we even got in there.
But David, I think what you're, go ahead, I'll send you a point or something.
I was just asking Amy if she knew.
He was trying to put the books together, I guess, for what we had or didn't have right now, and
You know what make it's with?
Huh? It's at a Bistar. Yeah.
Is he the only one on the account?
No, I think Mario's on the account, but Hayward just had been always the one that deposited the checks and wrote the checks, and
We could find that out during the meeting.
I'm not speaking for the board, but I feel pretty confident that, you know, I for one would definitely be there to support it. It's just time, everything Jeff said up there is one hundred percent. This is what baseball, soccer, softball, everybody's going to throughout this country. It ain't a Columbia County problem. But it's, times have changed. Like Ron said, thirty-something years, I remember him beating nails all day long, be out in the dark thirty, coaching them fellers. My kid was one of them. But the, my point is that it's, we live in a world that people's got to start stepping up, and we can do that as a whole. And me and Jeff's had many conversations about that. We were talking just this morning, and I'm all for supporting the program, the good people at Richardson Community Center. They've stepped up and they're taking on responsibility, you know, with the basketball thing and program that we just went through, and they're doing what they're gonna do to bring on activities through the Richardson Community Center. But me and David's had a conversation about that. I think it's time, and I'll just give you a real brief overlay. I've reached out in the last three months to the YMCA Alliance, that's down in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. And me and Jeff had a conversation about this this morning. When you really do your diligence and pay attention to how they run that operation, and that's the reason why it's successful for over a hundred and some odd years throughout the United States. You know, not only does the fundraisers would benefit Columbia County, Florida, it's, this is an international fundraiser that would help Columbia County. And there's, and the meeting that we all had over at Richardson that night, my good friend Tony Johnson, is like he said, he said, we gotta have structure, and Tony hit it dead on the head. We gotta have structure and everything we're gonna do to go forth because if you don't have structure, we can't rely on the way the organizations were set up ten years ago, twenty, when Jeff coached with me at baseball out there. Because the people are still there, there's just not that many of them. You know, when me and Jeff used to have a board meeting, we'd have twenty-something people show up. You're probably lucky to get eight now. So I would, if the board would see fit to let me be a part of it, I would want David and all these organizations, let's have a, let's have a meeting, and let's set up a time where we can go to South Florida, where the alliance is set up in the state of Florida. If Lake Park, Georgia can supply, why would two hundred and forty-five people a day on an average come in there? Columbia County could do it just as good or better. And, you know, Viald Austin, they got over four hundred people attend that thing in a day's time. And, but the cool thing about it is, is they, there's baseball, there's basketball, there's all kinds of, and it's not only activities for kids, there's a pile of activities there for our elderly citizens in the community. And that's what I thought was so unique about it is that it's broad range. And me and Rocky talked about this one, our community is spread from one end to the other. And, you know, we can't forget about our elderly people and our people, and even the youth in full white that needs help, you know? Because in today's world, it's a challenge sometimes riding twenty-seven miles to practice in the afternoon when mama does work till five o'clock that afternoon, you know? So I, I think it's time that, Jeff, I personally would commit to the CYSA to, you know, we'll do whatever's necessary to make it happen this year, to, you know, continue to support you guys. I definitely would support the money that would take necessary to do such. And, but let's get serious about it, and next year, this time come budget, we can sit down, we'll know what it takes. Because when I was talking to a gentleman, he could not believe that us as a community already have something such as Richardson Community Center Gym, because that's one of the YMCA's problems, is that they don't have a facility. But already, when I explained to him, you know, what level of a facility, he was blown away. He said, you got two-thirds of your problem solved right there. And, but the good thing about it is it brings structure, and everybody that's come to our meetings, Mr. Mobley as an example, you know, it's not only recreation, it's a support for everybody in the community. And I think we've grown to a point that I think YMCA can be very, very productive in our community. And this is a job creator too, because these ain't volunteers that run it. They pay people, they got administrators, they got project, I'm sorry, program leaders and stuff. So this is a, this is a long-lasting issue, and
Mr. Chairman, I agree, we gotta fund it, we can't do without football. But, but like you said, let's tweak it down for next year. Maybe we can get a YMCA or 501(c)(3) or something. But right now, they're kind of in a tight because of what happened, and I just can't see football going away, especially once the man that was so dedicated to it. And when are we gonna get rid of it this year? We're not gonna do that, not in my opinion, not for this case.
And I agree with everything y'all are saying, but at the same time, we need to see a budget.
Yeah.
So we need to see a budget. I mean,
Not a problem.
We need to have something to go by to fund, I mean, you know?
Well.
It sounds like y'all got some, some, and I know y'all was put in a bad situation with this, with untimely death of Mr. Christie, but, you know, it seemed that we got to figure out what's for it and get a budget together for football. And I agree with your commissioners, I have no problem, Mario can help you do that. Try, you know, try to fund it for this year, but.
So what I need clarification on is, are you wanting the county to run the program this year while we work towards a 501(c)(3)? Or do you just want to provide additional funding to the existing 501(c)(3) so they can get through this year, and we develop a plan for next?
From what I'm hearing from the board, David, I think we need to let them run it this year and provide funding for it, and look for a long-term solution, that'd give us a little time to try to figure out a long-term solution for it.
I concur, Chair. And Jeff, not as a commissioner, I'm sorry, David, I didn't mean to cut y'all off, but as a
The director of the board, I just request a motion.
Okay. But if you'd like for me to come sit down to you with my little bit of experience in baseball, I'd be more than glad to sit there and help you guys as, I'd volunteer time to put a budget together. And, you know, because I know you worried about the feet-on-the-ground thing.
Right.
Yeah, but I'd be more than glad to help you, and if I don't know it, I can reach out to somebody that can. But we can do it sooner or later, I'd be more than glad to. But with that being said, David, if they needed an emotion, I'll make a motion to, once a budget is presented, to fund the money necessary to run Columbia Youth Football Association for the upcoming fall season.
A second for discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Jeff, Mario can help you.
Oh, yeah, I mean,
Put that budget together.
We've got a history of, you know, what it's cost and whatever. I just don't have it here with me. Like I said, it's all kind of happened so fast, and
The only history you don't have is you don't have as many volunteers, so you gotta
Right.
You're gonna have to wing it a little, you know?
Oh, yeah, and, you know, it'll be a challenge, but, I mean, the biggest issue we would have, like I said, with being able to pay people is, you know, we're just gonna have to have some more funding, and I just don't know what that number is. And I can gladly come back in two weeks and I'll present it right here if that's what you want me to do.
Okay, I've got a, I've got a motion on the floor and a second. I just want to make sure I understand the motion, and make sure the clerk understands the motion, that we're gonna, the motion is to let Columbia Youth Football run it this year with funding help from the board, and look for a long-term solution for next year.
Correct.
Is that clear?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, light sign? Motion carries.
Appreciate it. And Jeff, we really appreciate you doing this because we know you got a lot going on.
I keep hearing YMCA and Boys Club, and all the one reason the Boys Club closed up, they couldn't get volunteer help anymore.
That's right, that's right. That's why.
They didn't have the money to pay people to do it.
You're exactly right.
Because they didn't charge much.
You're exactly right, Ron. The way that structure was set up, I agree with you a hundred percent. That's exactly, that's why the Y is such a different organization. Because not only do they, they do rely on volunteers, but their success has always been they pay people to run that operation. And that's, I was, and I would, I would ask anyone, I was blown away when I went to Lake Park, take a half a day, it'd really open your eyes. It'd really open your eyes.
Hey, thank y'all so much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for moving me up.
Hey, Rocky said, next time Rocky said, next time you enter this neighborhood, make sure you move them trees out of the way before you mow, okay?
Hey, remember the west side's got the worst grass over there, you gotta mow it a lot.
Mr. Farmer, you want to go ahead?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, thank you. Quick item for today's agenda. The two-cent local option gas tax will expire on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, pursuant to a fifteen-year extension that was authorized in two thousand and eight. The way the levying statute works is the board has to announce its intention to extend before June tenth. So we really do need to do this today. The extension that's been proposed by staff is for ten years. That's discretionary with the board. So you can certainly change that before the adoption of the ordinance, but we do need to adopt a resolution announcing intention to extend.
I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Two Zero Two Three R dash twenty-four for a term of ten years.
A second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Now, this, this resolution don't add any taxes. We're already paying, everybody's paying that tax now. It's just moving back for, to the state, where the state can actually divvy the money out other than the county, is that what it is?
No, this is just taking that nineteen eighty-six levy and continuing it. That's all this does. It just, let's say, it gives it, it gives it ten more years of oxygen.
And, you know, that's, that's the money that we depend on to keep the roads and
Right. They are in the county.
These are restricted transportation trusts.
A lot of out-of-town people pay it, which is good.
Sixty percent of it.
Fifty percent of it, that's crazy.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, light sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kirby?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have two items for your consideration this morning. The first one is the Columbia County Subdivision Design Maintenance Manual. Mr. Hollisworth has a mainly urbanized district. When he first got elected, he was overwhelmed about the amount of money and manpower and equipment that we went in behind, for lack of a better word, freshly developed subdivisions. Of course, we all recall our experience with Woodboro North, Turkey Creek, and many others. So we started a glorious path here several months ago of creating this manual. You've heard me talk about ASBILT surveys, you've heard me talk about additional CEI staff, all of those things that we're trying to put in this manual to right the wrongs of the past for our developers. Okay, you're gonna check the boxes, so the minute you get done, we don't go spend tax dollars behind you, right? This will be your final step of that process this morning, assuming you approve this manual. Okay? Cost estimating, unit prices are based on county's current mowing contracts, FDOT's maintenance cost estimates, and current county construction projects. My plan is to bring this back to you every July, assuming you approve this morning, to update it. Everything will change, as we've seen with prices. The object behind this final step, we've already captured all the new rules, and we'll learn as we go, okay, we missed that, let's check that up. But the object behind this final step of an MSBU is the folks that desire to live in a subdivision versus the folks that want to live in the country. Their costs are captured through the MSBU in addition to the normal adware and taxes. Okay? So I want to show you an example, that's a good example, how you're gonna get there. Forest Cove subdivision is out on Brantford Highway, right north of what we know as Forest Country today. This subdivision was applied for prior to this meeting, obviously, so it does not fall under the proposed system, but it's a real easy example to see how it works. So I captured it in three different areas. You've got your stormwater, you've got your right-of-way, and you have your vegetation removal, mowing and whatnot. So, for example, at your proposed Forest Cove, blue denotes the pond, easements, areas to be mowed, red, storm pipe and structures, and yellow is your right-of-way, okay? So how do you get there? We used our prices from FDOT, current mowing contract that Jeff just lifted with, and various other construction projects. So if you look at a hundred dollars an acre, in three categories, vegetation control, your ponds, a hundred dollars an acre, swales and canals, a hundred dollars an acre, easements, one hundred dollars an acre. Of course, you got miscellaneous at a hundred dollars. Your structures, fourteen dollars a little foot, pipe cleaning at three dollars a foot, and your structures at a hundred twenty dollars each. For Forest Cove, for example, you take the volume of what's there, that would total twenty-two, twenty-nine annuals. And you have your transportation costs. Roadside mowing at a hundred dollars an acre, pavement markings at one dollar per foot, your overlay of your asphalt is currently twenty-two, sixty-nine a square yard. Sign maintenance at six hundred dollars each. So the reason for many, but the most significant, for example, your 2269 per square yard for paving, that's today's price. Based on a 25-year lifespan, we don't know what it's gonna be in five years. If you take the first two categories, add this category, which is 4299, that captures 6529 annually. That's 13 lots, not proposed subdivision, where that equates to 502 dollars per lot. So the way it would work is the developer, so we had the 50% rule, that goes away. When all the boxes are checked in the design manual, everybody's happy. The county would take the O and M for the census vision. In this case, the developer would be on the hook for 13 times 502. Then as he sold each lot, that would be reduced. He sold two lots. You know, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Oliver Budlock, Commissioner Williams will be 500 on the hook, Mr. Hollisworth will be 500 on the hook, and the developer will be 11 on the hook. Make sense? At the end of the day, the purpose of this is we will immediately go in and maintain the subdivision. That way, it won't get away from us. And in theory, the money's captured here, would go into a reserve, and it would be able to redo, repave, and cover those costs. So obviously, right out the gate, we're going, assuming every subdivision keep being built, we're gonna be tasked with some labor burden. At some point, you should be able to capture labor costs and all being this broken. Once again, there's a summary of how you got there for the example of Forest Cove. And I am requesting a motion to approve the Columbia County Subdivision Design Maintenance Manual inclusive of the MSBU.
Oh, we got one comment card on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, actually. Is this the, is this the whole manual? Everything that's there, is the manual complete?
Is this the whole manual?
Yeah. What's in the agenda packet?
If you, uh-
If you go from the first page to the last page-
Highlights of the manual.
It's not the whole manual?
There is a manual, yes.
Is this the whole manual?
No, no.
So what are you approving? You're approving the whole manual this morning? But the whole manual's not there.
We have access to the whole.
But I didn't have access to it.
Well, you can get access to it if you-
Yeah, but I didn't even have a chance to review it today. The whole manual's not here. So I object to that because, Mr. Foreman, the whole manual's not there. You're asking for approval for the whole manual. The county rules that you wrote says all this stuff has to be there eight days before. Well, like the the lot situation last time, the backup material is not complete. I didn't know that when I looked at this stuff two days ago. I just figured this was the whole manual. So I'm asking that not be approved until the whole manual is, is made available in the agenda.
Sorry. What was the question on that? This, this is the first time, this has come before the board.
Yeah, but-
Yeah, right, but the whole manual's not there. They're asking for approval for the whole manual.
Mr. Kirby, this is as much of the manual as has been developed so far, correct?
The changes in the-
Yeah, there, there's not a separate document anywhere at this time. We'll confirm that, but this is the only, my understanding is this is the only document that exists right now.
Yeah, because this is the changes in, in, in the whole subdivision manual.
We don't, we're, we're developing it for the first time. So this is a brand-new thing. This is as much as has been developed so far, is my understanding, Mr. Looker. If Mr. Kirby can confirm that. I think this is all that's been developed so far.
On maintenance.
Correct.
On maintenance. This is all that's been developed. If you want the whole subdivision manual, you'll have to go look.
What are you approving tonight? Just this part of it?
We're approving this maintenance schedule.
It says here the Columbia County Design and Maintenance Manual.
Let Kevin explain.
So this is the whole maintenance manual. I mean, I'm wasting all my time trying to get an answer. Uh, that's the first thing. As I brought up, I don't know if it was here, most counties now that I know of, actually, I don't know any that don't, wait two years before they accept roads, sidewalks, sewers, water plants, et cetera, for maintenance. Yet you haven't done that yet. This is sort of like a blast from the past from the old times, where you would just accept stuff. This doesn't seem to really be that much of a difference. You need to wait two years to see if the stuff holds up. And that has not been done. And that's just bad county business. And I don't understand the part- Your indulgence, Mr. Chairman. I don't understand the part, this is inclusive of MSBU. I don't even know what that means because some of these new subdivisions don't have MSBU.
Thank you, Steve. We'll try to, we'll try to answer that for you.
Well, I just have one other question. On page, being you guys, took at least half my time thinking about whether or not you had a whole manual. On page 15 of this manual, it says, "Declaration." Is that a typo or is that a new term of law?
I, I saw that, that, that should obviously read declaration. That, that should-
I don't know, you know, in Columbia County, you, first I find that it's the whole manual, and then it's not.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
So, so our staff, obviously, just answered the question. We want to be on the ground when the subdivision is finished. We don't want to wait two years to have to go in there and try to fix everything that's happened over two years. We want to be on scene after it's developed.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, the recent LDR changes that the board approved was to create a MSBU or a municipal benefit unit for each subdivision so that it would be paying for itself. That was in the changes to the LDRs you adopted.
502.28 per lot, is it?
Correct.
MSBU?
Correct.
The MSBU?
Yes, sir. Um, for transparency purposes. Many years ago, we went to a 50% build-out rule before we took over the O and M for multiple reasons. At that time, we used a significant checklist to ensure it was built properly. What we've learned through the years was that checklist simply was not detailed enough to capture all of the deficiencies that was done by the developers and contractors. Woodbury North is the easiest example. When I went out there and throwed our eyes on as-bills, it looked like the drawings, right? Your naked eye cannot see the elevation of the road. It cannot see the elevation of the flow line and inverts of the pipes. So this board requested us to make sure that that happened again, right? So several of us got together and spent many, many hours creating, to answer Mr. Foreman's question, this is the first stab at a design manual. So it's brand-new. We put together everything that we understood. Once again, we want to come back on an annual basis. Okay, let's revise it. We found out that we should be looking at oak trees, for lack of a better word, okay? The last step, we talked about a new CEI guy to help us, right? We talked about the design manual. We talked about revision of the checklist. And the last step in that was per modification to the LDRs, was to create an MSBU to pay for those services, right? That is, I didn't want to ask you to adopt the manual without the MSBU because that is the final step in it. The only purpose of me showing this example today is, for example, of Forest Cove, I want to give you an idea of what it's gonna cost homeowners. Because I thought that was important. I didn't know when we started. Is that $10,000 a year, is it $500 a year? When in 13 lots to cover that, it's 500 bucks a year. Obviously, if you got 200 lots, that's a different number. This will allow your taxpayers that do not live in proposed subdivisions, as Commissioner Hollisworth, once again, when he first got elected, you remember this. You were overwhelmed.
Just to tell you, we, we went to one house that was not anybody's fault. The owner of the house, no one's fault, except, in my opinion, the contractor. And I, I think in everybody's opinion, the contractor. And we spent, what?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand dollars diverting water around his house. Now, that thirty-five thousand dollars came from the feller that lives on a farm out on the west side of town. Comes from the old people that live on a farm, and the people that school their own land, that they have a little flood, they got a tractor, they fix it. Or, or the feller that's living in a mobile home on the west side of town, and, and he's paying for somebody in a $300,000 house that's got a problem that was caused by a contractor who made a bunch of money. And I'm not down in contractors at all. It's not a problem with most of them. There are just a few that use this, this, this way of, of, with the engineer, where they get an engineer to say, yeah, it'll be fine. And then it ain't fine. And then we have to pay for it. The taxpayers of Columbia County are paying for a man that's got plenty of money. Or, or it has a nice house. And, and I, I, I just can't, and I feel sorry for the homeowners too. They, they don't know what to do. There's been towns, you bet there, man's almost crying, like, what do I do? My septic tank is washing out. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's very concerning. And just like up there in Woodbury North, I feel so sorry for those people. You know, it's just, you know?
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll give you a best example. I spoke with a man that's designing or building Forest Cove, even following this. Yesterday morning, he called me. He said, if I'm reading this right, I'm gonna have to do a full topo survey before CO is issued. I see you're exactly right.
You got it.
He says, why? He was upset. I said, I called a man by name. I said, think about it. Do you think that over time, the dirt doesn't change? It takes 10 years to build this out? What about if the neighbor goes and hauls 40 loads of field on his lot? Because that, this particular subdivision all drains to the ditches, to the pond. So if man X changes topography significantly, that changes everything that happens.
You got it. You got it. We had that at Country Club.
This, this captures all that.
Mr. Kirby, this is just one of the things we have done.
Yes.
To try to correct the problem with subdivisions in this county. This is not the only thing we've done. Oh, we've required final topos. We've required final survey plans of the subdivision. There's a lot of things we've, we've looked back and we know where our problems come from, and we're trying to solve those problems. And this is one of the steps along that way to solve this problem.
And it hasn't been done, and it's got to be because this, I mean, we're spending a bunch of money correcting things that never should have happened, really. You know, it never should have happened. Commissioner Hollisworth, when this Kevin started talking about this, what, Kevin, three years ago now when we dealt with it?
Yes, sir.
I reached out to past developers, current developers. And, and the downside is, the only reason why that was probably, and I wasn't involved in that conversation Kevin alluded to yesterday, but this gentleman, whoever he or she may be, has decided to do a small subdivision. But all the old timers, I'm gonna say, the Pete Gabys of the world, is the one that educated me, probably most of all. And like Mr. Gabby said, to quote him, this makes perfectly good sense. It's not fair that somebody living on the river, it's Tuckney, you know, has got the supply, you know, take care of that 35 foot. When I first come into office, remember what we did down at Edgely Estates? That was a big nut.
That's a good example. Like Mr. Murphy.
There you go.
That is what it states. If I had to put a number like that, it's six digits.
Yeah, yeah, and here we-
It happens.
And, and, and once we opened up that can of worms, we couldn't stop, could we, Kevin? We had to keep on going because we kept creating issues downwind until we finally resolved it. And this is, this is much needed. I had a commissioner reach out to me from mid-Florida, uh, uh, early on this week. And everybody's faced with this, but I, I think we're doing the right thing. And it, it's, it's way, it's way past due, way past due. And you, and you also have subdivisions that were built perfectly, don't have any problems. There you go. And they're paying for the subdivision? You got it. That, that has all the problems. It, it, it's gotta be, it's gotta be more fair across the board. I don't mind paying taxes, but I, I want to make sure they're going, you know, and, and this, this is people taking care of their own, is what it is.
And just because other counties do it different, don't mean that's the way it should be.
That's right. That's right.
Mr. Chair, let me support that for, for the record. If you build a brand-new house and immediately start tending to it, you're not gonna get away, you're gonna be on top of it. I don't want to wait two years.
No.
And plus, you're not capturing your costs for two years. You can't charge a feller if you're not tending to it.
Good thing about this is right there, that 107,025 year cycle, that's money in the bank. That's the way you gotta look at it. And that's an investment in your community.
All I know, I don't, I don't want another subdivision.
Absolutely. That's crazy. Yeah.
Very.
Mr. Williams, that's what we're trying to avoid.
I'm, I'm gonna tell y'all something. Have, if you own a house on the river, or horseshoe, or somewhere like that, if you've ever owned one on the river or something like, you always, the, the stress level goes crazy. When you, if you own a camper on the river, whatever you have, and, and I'm gonna tell you something. I've seen those people down there worrying about flooding, and I've had to worry about flooding many times at my, my house and, and my other places, my little lots with the campers. And I'm gonna tell you something, I cannot imagine worrying about my home where my children sleep every night flooding every time rain comes. And it's, it's a terrible thing if you've never dealt with it. It's terrible. You know, I know. I mean, it, it's bad. So we can nip that in the bud with this and make sure when people get their lot, it's the right way and it's done the right way and it's taken care of. And they don't have to worry about all of it.
And if there, if there is a problem, we have money to fix it.
We got money to fix it. That's right.
Tell me, tell me this, uh, 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 Mr. Attorney. If I get an engineer to come in and certify that it's all right, I don't have to build my house one foot above the center line of the road. And, uh, and, and we accept that, that, that engineer's finding. And everything happens in the bad way, instead of what he believed was gonna be right. Should not liability go to the engineer?
Yes. And, and Commissioner, that is exactly what we changed about that provision of the code. It used to be we just required a signed letter on advice of our engineers. Said, look, unless I sign and seal that thing, it really doesn't mean anything. So we now require the seal. As a consequence, the cost of those certifications went way up, but it's my understanding they're still extended. But that is exactly why you did what you did, was to create that liability between the homeowner and the engineer who gives the certification.
That way, the homeowner's got some-
We're trying to give teeth to the homeowners who get affected by this stuff.
Joel, uh, Ron, I'm glad you brought that up because there, there's a scenario that's taking place here locally. Joel, how do we protect the homeowner and the board of county commissioners in the future? Did that person that provides that certified draw, uh, letter stating that, know this house ain't gonna flood, should he also have to provide us with a bond?
Well, so-
No, that's getting real touchy, but it's happened.
So, so requiring the level of certification we require is, you know, candidly, also intended to protect the board. Because our building officials, when they're issuing permits and they're going forward, they're relying on that certification, right? They're relying on that, that opinion too. So the way I'd put it to you, Commissioner, if we were to be sued by that homeowner saying that we did something wrong, we would then impede that engineer and say, we relied on him, uh, under our code. So we are, it, it's kind of like moving the pieces around on a chessboard in terms of liability to make sure the county's protected, but also that the homeowner's protected.
Would a bond protect you if that individual that certified that, that letter there, swapped names of his corporation or went out of business or whatever?
It, it could, but the issue would be the privy of the bond. The bond should really be between the homeowner and the engineer if there were to be a bond required. We're, we're, we're really kind of stepping out of the equation when we require the certified letter. That's, that's why we're requiring certification.
Because the homeowner's going to get the certified letter.
And they're the one who's gonna end up with the claim.
Right, exactly.
So, so, I mean, I understand exactly what you're saying, but, you know, we used to require the sign-off letter, again, because that got the county out of the equation. Well, your engineer said it was okay, we're gonna let you go. We added the layer with the certification to try to create more relief for the homeowner. Because we do, I mean, look, it happens. We all know people who do.
The engineer gets the letter, it presents it to the county. We're really out of it at that point.
But, but we, but we, we upped the ante.
Right.
We upped the ante by saying, we're not gonna accept the letter anymore. We're gonna have to require a signed and sealed certification. Um, so we did, and, and we can. We can go the route of saying, we're not gonna do that at all. And that was discussed. But I think we all know situations where a property's on a downward slope. It falls into a FEMA flood map just because there's a creek at the bottom of the hill. There's situations.
We're dealing with right now with these FEMA flood maps.
Yeah. And there are situations, I think we can all envision, where we do want to allow for that engineer certification.
I mean, hey, half the county wouldn't be developed.
Right.
Yeah, it might. Not now. We need a motion on this, though, Ron. Chair?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to approve Columbia County Subdivision Design Maintenance Manual.
Second.
Have motion and second.
Hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. I just, I just want to ask one question. After 25 years, what's gonna happen?
Once again, my plan is to come every July and update the schedule of values and amend the design manual. We're gonna find things we, we didn't think of. So after 25 years, it just will continue. So the most significant part about maintenance of a subdivision is paving, right? So theoretically, if you take that $22 a square yard in this particular subdivision, I think I equated it to like 80 grand to repave it a day. So you'll capture your $107,000. Theoretically, you'll be a spin a buck. So you'll capture your $107,000. Theoretically, you'll be a spend a bunch of that doing ditches and mowing. And we're gonna mow it eight times a year, right? Just like we're, we're following suit to our urban mowing contract. You will have spent a lot of that money tending to day-to-day business. Then you'll have enough money to repave it and it just continues. The cycle just continues. Based on updated schedule of values.
I was just thinking, if you went 25 years and didn't have no more money, I know you got some money captured, but.
You'll capture it on an annual basis forever. It just keeps on and it's the price you pay to live in the subdivision versus living out in rural.
So every year as part of your budget process, you will have to approve what you're gonna charge or assess to that MSBU.
Could be updated every year.
Yeah, we may have to change. It might be less, might, you know.
Like this year, if you had a year like this past year, you would have to adjust that.
Right.
So it goes on as long as the board adopts that assessment every single year as part of the budget.
Just like we do the lighting.
All right, that's, I just wanted to kinda get that clarified.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Um, the final item I have is a housekeeping issue. During the budget presentation, the board approved the capital project to install outdoor court lights at Richardson. Project was placed on hold until ownership was determined. Since then, we have determined the county owns it. Estimated cost of time, $280,000. And we were in a capital project meeting update and I just wanted to reassure that the board still desires to have this project. So I've requested a motion to reapprove now that we know we have ownership of lighting at Richardson.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, 280 for the, uh, lighting, court lighting at Richardson Community Center.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby. All right, Mr. Kraus, we'll, we'll go back to you now. Be on number five, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. So next, this is the good news. We want you to approve going forward with the group light and group health insurance for the county. We presented to you that they were proposing that they would not raise rates this year. We went back and had them negotiate with Blue Cross Blue Shield. They actually got a 4.8% decrease in our premium next year. The insurance committee met on the May 17th and they looked at the results and they said, "We recommend going Florida Blue next year with the decreased rate of 4.8%, but keeping the same benefit plan that we've had a lot of the past several years." And so they're asking the board to approve the rate with Florida Blue at 4.8% reduction and the current benefit plan coverages.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Motion carries.
So the next one's the interlocal agreement with the medical examiner services. As you know, we don't have a medical examiner. So according to Florida or chapter 4 or 6 of Florida statutes, the district four medical examiner provides those services to Columbia County. Well, he wants to be paid. So he is actually running out of the city of Jacksonville. So this is an interlocal agreement with the city of Jacksonville to continue them providing our medical examiner services until September 30th, 2028. Uh, it does allow for termination beforehand if the board so chooses. It also allows for annual rate increases. So it's a five-year continuation of them providing us the medical examiner services.
Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Like sign. Motion carries.
The next item is budget amendment 2357 of federal forfeiture funds. As you know, we collect the federal forfeiture funds and hold them. We cannot expend those funds. Only the sheriff can expend those funds. He is requested to expend 134 or 35 of the federal forfeiture seizure monies to replace his service weapons that are 10 years old. So we're recommending, uh, approving the money so that he can purchase new service weapon.
Any questions on that?
I make a motion to accept, uh, BA 23-57.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Like sign. Motion carries.
Finally, this is more for your information and discussion. There's really no, um, action you need to take at this time. Uh, but on May 24th, the city of Lake City met and they, um, approved, well, I, they met prior year, pri, they met prior to May 24th and they decided to terminate our interlocal agreement with the city to provide building official services. So on May 24th, they sent us a notice of termination to the interlocal agreement. It becomes effective the last day would be November 20th, 2023. Um, we don't do all their permitting. There's a lot of misnomers in the community that we do all their permitting. We merely provide building official inspections. So all we do is that final inspection. They would like to do it themselves. Contract called for, uh, a period of time to transition over. And of course, that, like I said, that ends November 20th, 2023, at which time the city would provide their own building official services. Uh, for your information, between October and, uh, May, we collected 127, $593 for providing these services. We believe that when this goes back over to the city, that will not be a detriment to the county at all. We've got plenty of work. Uh, it actually keeps us from having to hire an additional building inspector in next year's budget.
Any questions on that, guys? All right. David, you wanna move on down to, uh, let's talk about the 911?
All right, 911 dispatch consolidation update. So we met Tuesday of this week to discuss what's it gonna cost to consolidate 911? Uh, all the parties are part of this regular, we meet on a regular basis. All the parties are a member of this committee. Uh, city police, city fire, county sheriff's office, county fire, the dispatchers, the IT departments. Um, you know, of course, Commissioner Ford and, and city councilman Sampson are part of this committee. And we've been meeting on a regular basis. Commissioner Williams asked for a quick update. What we came up with Tuesday is what's it gonna, what are the dollars involved to make this thing happen? So the funds needed to consolidate dispatch, right now, today, one time, $9,120 to merge the smart cap system from the cities and the counties into one smart cap system. They'll keep separate records maintenance systems, but they'll have one smart cap system for the dispatching of all units. Um, city wanted the cameras that they have that they monitor in their dispatch center of their lobby of, they have a system where they can monitor what's going on in different parts. They wanted the dispatchers to continue to be able to monitor that system, which is a reasonable request. That's really about a thousand dollars. What, according to the IT people, really needs to happen is we need to buy a couple monitors. Big monitors, so the cameras show up in dispatch and the dispatchers can see what's going on. Uh, annual cost, this is a recurring cost every year. Uh, there is a fiber optic line Comcast provides that is not currently encrypted, that will have to be encrypted according to sieges. So we don't have an option on that. We've got to encrypt that line. The encryption of that line's $1,615 every single year. Similarly, the sheriff maintains a sonic wall, uh, to keep, you know, the system secure. That maintenance annually is 1,263. And then finally, based on the call volumes provided to us by the city IT department, uh, our IT department believes we probably need to expand the bandwidth for the phone system. Uh, this is separate than, you know, the CAD system, separate than that stuff. This is bandwidth needed to operate the VoIP phones. Based on the additional call volume we'll be receiving in at the center, we're still waiting on the quote from AT&amp;T. We don't believe it's significant. Uh, that's important in that the group believes if we're going to move forward, these things need to be done today. Prior to the budget year, so that they can test it, they can make sure it's working, they can ensure everything's functioning prior to October 1st, which was the goal of when we would have consolidated dispatch. So I'm gonna ask you to approve, uh, those expenditures in the current budget. And I'll have to come back to you next week for the budget amendment, telling you how I'm gonna fund those. In addition, if you're going to consolidate dispatch, we would take the city's dispatchers and they would become county dispatchers. The city has approved 12 dispatch positions. Currently, they have eight filled. If you do 12 positions, which is what they have currently allocated, that would be two positions dedicated to city law enforcement and one position dedicated to fire, or three positions per shift, four shifts. At county pay rates and county benefit rates, that would total $753,000 annually. So that would be the big cost, the 500 pound gorilla in the corner. Having said that, um, discussions over time talked about a possible liaison from the sheriff's office to 911. They would have an office out there and they would watch how law enforcement is going to make sure there are no issues. That has not been discussed in terms of financing. Uh, they also talked about at one point possibly needing an additional IT person to handle the needs of the consolidated system. Again, there's no, I have no cost for that. That wasn't brought up as part of the meeting Tuesday. And then finally, there's gonna be increases to the number of PSAP licenses we need because we have more terminals, more stuff. Because you gotta maintain them at the backup as well as here. The backup becomes a full county backup. That means as long as the city donates the equipment to the county, it becomes county equipment. All of that maintenance, all the PSAP licenses then would be part of the 911 grant. I did not include that cost here because it is grant funded. But that is an additional cost that's out there. It will increase the amount of grants that we apply for every year. Any questions?
David, um, let's talk about the additional 12 dispatchers.
Okay.
Oh, like David said, right now, the city only has eight on payroll. They, they, they run 12, or, but they actually run, they run 12?
I believe that Chief Butler said Tuesday, the day of it.
They have the same issue we have trying to fill positions with dispatchers. That's one thing hopefully this here would, uh, would help do is, uh, oh, we're not competing with the city on trying to, trying to get dispatchers. But also, uh, I got 753. What we're, we're negotiating with the city now on, uh, when that would, uh, when that would end because right, or at least they've agreed right now from what I, from the meetings we've had, that, uh, the first three years, they would continue to pay their dispatchers for the first three years, which is about 550.
They currently pay around 550, 570 a year, uh, salary and benefits for each dispatcher. It varies because each dispatcher has a different, obviously, salary, but overall, uh, they're paying around 550, 560,000 dollars a year.
That's for the eight, I'm sorry. That's for the eight.
That's for the 12 positions.
But they're, they're, right now, they only have eight on payroll. One of them, they're, we're asking for 12, 12 more dispatchers, which is three per shift. Two for law enforcement and one for fire.
12 more?
For the city.
12 more, 12 total.
12 total. Okay.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. 12 more than what we, what we, there'd be, uh, three more dispatchers per shift. Two for, uh, for law enforcement, for the city, which is what they have over there now, plus one for fire. So it would be the ones we have on staff now, plus three more positions, which would be 12 dispatchers total. Because there's four shifts.
But eight of those are coming from the city, right?
Yeah.
Right. For clarity's sake, we are talking about taking 100% of the city dispatchers that wanna come over to the county, over to the county. We don't want anybody to lose their job through the consolidation process.
Now, we would have to budget for that, but talking to Tom, he's always had trouble with, uh, with filling all the positions. So, you know, oh, that's kinda up in the air, how many we'll fill, but.
We, we, there's that much pay in, in benefits difference of five something versus 753?
Yes.
Okay. I've, I've, I've just never heard that. What's, uh, the city's, so they're, 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 they're gonna jump across the fence pretty quick. Because it sound like somebody's gonna benefit.
Most of them will get pay raises, not all, but most.
Okay, okay. Okay, now on the, uh, David, if I may, on the increase on the PSAP licenses, just for clarity and record, this is just for the licensing purposes. This is not in no form, fashion whatsoever creating an additional PSAP, correct?
So the city of Lake City, and Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, purchased several this, um, I guess you call them dispatch stations that would have a PSAP license. And we would add it, those to our inventory. But again, it would all be covered under our 911 grant. How many stations are there?
The city, the city purchased three 911 workstations to work on our vesta system, okay? Right now, the city has a maintenance contract with AK Associates, same vendor we use, to maintain those. The only way that I can grant fund the maintenance of those is the city turns those over to the county. They become county property. I can then fund those. Also, the city's CAD computers, the computer aided dispatch terminals will have to be turned over to the county because those will have to go from the city's network to the sheriff's network because the sheriff maintains CAD. So those two things will have to happen. Basically, they're gonna turn their equipment over to us and their existing dispatch center will then become the complete backup for the county. That equipment will still stay there. Right now, we have a four-position backup in a room adjacent to their dispatch center. If the consolidation happens, then their dispatch center would now become the county's backup. And all that equipment will be turned over to the county for us to maintain and us to use.
So the short answer is three additional positions.
But, but, but they have, the city has done nothing to, to make us think they wouldn't turn that over to us, right?
The police chief indicated that they would do that so they would be included in the grant funding. Otherwise, the city would have to continue to pay the maintenance on the.
And they would have to use AK because nobody else.
They have no problem doing that.
No, they have no objection.
But if Columbia County has the whole, there's still only one.
There's still one PSAP. There's still the county PSAP. That's the only.
We grow by three position, physical equipment positions. Understand, understand that. The, uh.
What, let, let me ask something. So what you're saying is we would take on all the expense of 911 after three years? All the employees and everything?
Yes.
Yes.
Is, is that normal? Is that usually done?
You gotta think about it like this here. Right now, even the city residents are Columbia County residents.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're paying taxes in Columbia County. Right now, the city residents are paying for our 911 and the city's 911. You see what I'm saying? They're double taxing, really.
I, I'm not familiar with the way it's paid. I didn't know.
So it would, it really, if we do one 911, we're gonna still collect city tax from the city, from county residents and the city. The paper, that's the paper 911. So I, I know it's saying we're taking it on, but really, that's the way it should be.
Yeah.
Because the city don't collect any money out of county. You see what I'm saying?
If you don't, you're gonna got a double taxation and that's not. That's right. Yeah.
So having said that, I had Tom go out and survey consolidated dispatch centers. Of the 15 departments he talked to, and I've got a copy for you. Eight do not charge a fee and just provide the service automatically. Some used to and dropped it, but eight of them don't. Seven of them do charge some type of a fee. Some, it's a whole service, some it's just an equipment fee. Um, but, so it's 50/50 mix.
David, with that being said, and one of mine in your previous conversations, the, uh, with the fire assessment within the city of Lake City, that, whatever that figure would be, would continue to go on, correct? After the three-year agreement?
Right. So if you go by what Commissioner Williams said, we're trying to avoid double taxation of city residents so they don't pay a city tax and a county tax for the same service?
Correct.
The fire assessment isn't charged inside the city. So if you didn't charge the city fire assessment, you would be charging county residents part of their fire assessment for dispatch. And the city residents would be getting off scot-free.
Correct, correct.
So if they pay their, part of their fire assessment, we pay our fire assessment. Again, it's equal and fair to everybody in the, in the community.
Seems fair enough. Yeah, for sure. You got any input on that, Tom? Does that sound kosher to you?
Well, I, I was not, I haven't been privy to the previous meetings where a lot of the money issues were discussed.
Okay.
The county right now, I believe the county fire department contributes $250,000 a year out of fire assessment for dispatch services. Uh, I, I think it's perfectly reasonable for the city, whatever they, they currently are paying for their dispatch services for, from fire assessment, to continue paying that to the county. I think that would be a reasonable, uh, thing even beyond three years or five or whatever y'all decide. I mean, those are, those are political decisions for you. But I don't, I don't think that's unreasonable. But I don't, I don't think that's unreasonable, uh, to, to do that.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I don't have any problem with how they wanna do it as long as we do away with double taxation.
Yes, yeah.
Anything else to work out is fine, but, but as long as we deal with the double taxation, then everything should work.
And, and, uh, David, I believe you said the chief's plan currently is the money savings that will occur here, his whole plan is to put more officers on the, uh, street in the future, correct?
That is what Chief Butler has said. He's hoping that any savings the city does get from this operation would go towards higher edition police officers. But of course, that's gotta be approved by the city manager and the city council.
Which, you know, if that's the way it goes, I mean, this will win-win for everybody. It sounds like, uh, you know. I mean, we all seen what happened right there at the mall this weekend. That was kind of crazy. But the, uh, anything to put more officers on the street and, you know, and uh, you know, I, I can definitely support something such as that. But David, if I may, on the, this, let's get some clarity on this request for law enforcement liaisons in addition, so it position?
I think.
Somebody.
So what, so what the sheriff is requesting is he, he wants another, he wants somebody to help his, he's only had one IT guy.
Gotcha.
He's requesting a position for, uh, one more staff for IT. Because right now, he does, he does the IT basically for, for the fire department, Columbia County, uh, according to him, now, I'm just, I'm just going by what I was told in these meetings. They do a lot of, they do a lot of the IT work for the fire rescue and his, and, uh, for the law enforcement. And so he needs, his one IT guy needs, needs help. Plus, he wants to have one liaison full-time at the 911 center to oversee the dispatchers for all the law. Kind of not, not be their boss, but to help with any dispatcher or any, uh, see any problems he could have out there. Uh, like I say, I wish he was here. He could explain that position better, but uh, he, he is under the impression that he needs somebody out there full-time to, uh, to kind of help with any law enforcement issues that may arise up there as far as dispatching.
And I don't know what the value or cost of that is. I assume when they submit their budget, it will be included in their budget.
He has insinuated to me that he would include that position in next year's budget for his sheriff's office.
Is that necessary?
Sir?
Is that necessary to have someone, uh, to oversee it?
I don't really know exactly what this person would be doing, but the sheriff seems to think it's necessary.
Yep. If y'all recall a few years back, uh, our, uh, what we call our F-TAC, our, our coordinator for, not for the F and NCIC system, was a county employee. And we transferred that position to the sheriff because the sheriff is technically responsible for F and NCIC. And they're doing basically his work with injunctions and warrant hits and all that stuff. So he has a full-time person at 911 now. The F and NCIC person, Kathy Jolly, is a sheriff's employee.
Who's that?
Kathy Jolly.
Okay.
He, uh, apparently, and again, I'm privy to these conversations, hadn't been discussed with me, but apparently he is wanting to put a lieutenant or captain position at 911 to monitor law enforcement dispatch. I don't know exactly what they'll do. I'm not, again, haven't had a discussion about it. Uh, but that's what he wants to do. So.
What authority would he or she have, David?
Uh, that was discussed in.
So the authority is any employee out at 911 Center, dispatch works for the county and would be under Mr. Brazil. So if there were a sheriff's captain, lieutenant, deputy, whatever, position out there as a liaison, my understanding is his intent was they would sit and watch how we dispatch law enforcement to make sure there are no problems. And should he find problems or have disagreements with how we're doing things, he would raise them with Tom or myself on, we've got to make changes.
Who's watching it now?
Same person.
Same person, yeah. That's a waste of taxpayers' dollars. I won't support that.
I, and basically, basically, I run dispatch.
You do?
And I had, I had 30 years full-time in law enforcement, as y'all know, out south. And I was a captain when I retired and, and we do law enforcement dispatch. Don Meyer with the sheriff's office, Lieutenant Don Meyer, is the assigned liaison to dispatch. And that's not a full-time position out there, but he is my go-between with sheriff's office. If there's an issue now with a law enforcement-related dispatch problem, he brings it to me, we'll discuss it, and we'll see if we can correct the issue. Now, 99.9% of the time that I've been there for 10 years, this has not been a policy or procedure issue. These have been mistakes that a dispatcher has made, most of them relatively minor. We fix it, uh, and, and, and move on from there. We haven't really had any procedural or policy issues. Uh, I've given the sheriff's office and the city a copy of our dispatch SOPs, our policies, for law enforcement. I've asked them to review them. If you recall, those of you all on the board back in 2018, uh, the sheriff and I, we, we gave them a copy of our policy manual and said, here, whatever you want to change, let us know. There were five things they wanted to change. We changed them. So I, I, I don't know. Like I said, it's not, it's not my decision. It's, you know, that, that's something he's requested, so.
So not to speak for the sheriff, but I'm thinking what he is requesting is that liaison, say Don, because he's who's currently serving in that capacity, would become full-time liaison out assigned at the 911 center.
So, so I, I guess I was, he had, the sheriff's office has a full-time employee there already?
No, he's not, he's not.
No.
Don, Don Meyer's over investigating.
So the direct answer is yes. Kathy Jolly is over there full-time
Yes.
with a full-time job handling all the warrants and CIGI stuff and security stuff and all the fun stuff that she gets to do. Uh, she would not be watching the dispatchers and how dispatchers are handling their job.
So she really has nothing to do with dispatch?
Well, yeah, she, she interacts with them on a daily basis, but she doesn't, she doesn't.
She has.
Supervise law enforcement dispatch.
Let me put it this way. She has a very technical job of making sure
She's a computer.
what gets into the computer, what gets handled with the warrants is accurate, is correct. If for some reason, a call comes out in the next morning, there's errors in it, she makes sure that it's not, doesn't have errors in it. She is the quality control for everything that gets into the sheriff's system.
But Tom, you run, you run that department out there. What's your take on having another personnel from the sheriff's office there?
Well, I, I can't speak for the sheriff. Uh, I really don't see, my, my personal opinion, I, I don't see a need for it. It, it's his budget though, and if he wants to assign somebody out there, that, that's his, I mean, I'd, I'd perfectly welcome Don or anybody else out there. I mean, there's no, there's no secrets. There's no black helicopters. There's no uh, secret meetings or anything. It's, you know, uh, whatever, whatever makes him comfortable. And, and again, back a few years ago, he was uncomfortable with F and NCIC being under a county employee. So we transferred that entire budgeted position to his budget and made Kathy Jolly sheriff's office employee so that she can oversee all the F and NCIC stuff because technically, that is what the sheriff is responsible for, is F and NCIC and CIGI security, criminal justice information security. That, that is his responsibility.
Statutorily.
Statutorily.
Right.
So that was, that was his concern, not having that under his purview. So he has an employee. She reviews, does quality, like David said, does quality control on everything related to F and NCIC, CIGI security. She also does pre-employment backgrounds on any of our new hires.
And security testing.
And security testing.
In other words.
Because what we've done is we, we make now, we have Don, who is the liaison right now, sits on our oral board for hiring, okay? And also the sheriff has to, or the sheriff's office, I don't know who he's got delegated to do it, he does it himself, but they have to sign off on any new hires having access to F and NCIC security. Kathy is the one who does the backgrounds for that and makes a recommendation, yea or nay. I mean, in 10 years I've been there, we've been in perfect agreement on everybody we've denied, you know, for whatever reason. I mean, again, because of my background, you know, I, I know what he's looking for, or, you know, I know what, I know what these people, you know, that might be a problem would be there.
In all transparency, Chief Butler is planning to retain one employee, um, on his side that the city would pay for to be their liaison.
As their, as, also as their F-TAC, because we also, once we consolidate, we are gonna be doing the F and NCIC entries of the city's stolen property, missing persons, you know, stolen articles, all that kind of stuff. They also have to do that validation checklist, okay, with all those. So he's gonna have someone doing that as a city employee he's gonna retain.
So he, so he, that person.
Kathy won't do the city stuff.
Oh, okay.
Their employee will do the city stuff.
So their person, their employee will be that Kathy?
Yes.
Okay.
But I don't know if, I don't know if that person, I don't know if he's having a plan to have that person at the 911 center or if they're gonna stay over at the city and just do it, because everything, it's all done by computers now.
So, right now, we have three, we have three offices set aside for code enforcement at the 911 center. We will be moving code enforcement out of the 911 center and allocating those three offices to law enforcement for their liaisons.
But, but, and I, I don't really have a big problem with that. But, I mean, the years I was chair, uh, before Commissioner Ford took, uh, 911, Don Meyer, uh, Tom alluded to, he, he was great. I mean, he, he was a problem solver.
He's a good officer.
Uh, it, I, what Don does, I think he does very well. I just got a real big problem with you can't serve two, two masters. And be it Don, be it Fred or Suzie or whoever, that person can't have no authority. If the sheriff wants to pay for it out of his budget, where's that?
We've made it clear to the sheriff, David and I both, all the employees out there are county employees. They are under common.
Yeah.
So, like I say, his liaison would just be somebody, I guess, eyes and ears for the sheriff's office is all I can figure, sir.
And I, I wish, you know, I, I, I guess the eyes and the ears is, we haven't had a problem in all these years. Uh, I, I just don't see where that's at. But if, if that's something that was agreeable to Tom, uh, you, you're committing and what have you, but when the sheriff brings his budget, which it should be in our laps today, I think today is June 1st. Uh, I won't vote to fund that position because that's already a position he's got in his budget. That's building government and supposedly we're supposed to be conservative.
And again, and again.
We need to be shrinking government.
I don't care.
Yeah.
If he wants to assign somebody out there, that's fine with me. I don't care. Hell, I'll share an office with him. I don't care because there's no secrets out there.
But Commissioner Ford, didn't you just say that, make sure I understood you correctly, he would, the sheriff alluded to, he would be coming forth in his budget for us to fund that position?
He has.
I, I won't do that. That, that's a waste of taxpayers' dollars. Because Don Meyer, I wish Don was here, but, uh, Don Meyer does one heck of a job of what he does. He's a, he's, he's an asset to the sheriff's office in Columbia County.
And, and again, in, in our discussions with the city, it's been made very clear to the city that their current dispatcher, their dispatchers would become county employees.
Correct.
And if dispatcher Sally is dispatching for the city today, she may be dispatching for county fire tomorrow and maybe dispatching for the sheriff next week. They're not always gonna be the same people in positions because our, our center is set up the way people rotate around.
Them dispatches got an extra job.
Yes.
Fire to, yes.
Sheriff, yeah.
Because they, you want to keep them.
Well, keep everybody current, fresh, and they don't get burnout working the same thing over and over and over again.
And Chief Butler really didn't have a concern about it. His concern was he wanted two people handling city police dispatch.
And that, and the reason.
He didn't say which two people. It's two people.
The reason for the, the reason for absorbing 12 positions, okay, is because we need three per shift. The chief is insistent upon having two people assigned as law enforcement dispatchers. The way we have it set up right now is we have three law enforcement dispatchers, which handle the sheriff's office. And we have three personnel assigned to fire EMS 911 and a supervisor. That's our current budget. Seven people a shift.
If we're fully staffed and nobody's on vacation.
And July 1. July 1, we're fully staffed. For the first time. And what y'all have done with salaries is what's causing that. We'll be able to hire people. And I applaud you for it. But, uh, the, the chief police wants two people assigned to law enforcement dispatch for the city. So we would go from three law enforcement dispatchers to five law enforcement dispatchers.
But they all can still help each other.
They'll all help each other. They'll all be, they'll be sitting next to each other. They're all back and forth. It, it's gonna take that, that transfer time out of this equation.
Gotcha.
But it may not be the same people working that seat every day. It may be somebody different. But if we have five people assigned to law enforcement dispatch, all right, we are still gonna have our three assigned to fire EMS 911. Also, what we're taking on with the city is the same thing we take on with the sheriff. We're taking on the after-hours phone calls. We're gonna be taking on the city utilities after-hours emergency phone calls. Uh, yeah.
Call volumes.
The call volumes are up here. Uh, uh, for example, uh.
This came from the city's IT department?
Yeah.
This was for a two-week period, the number of calls they received that we would now be receiving in the dispatch center.
Roughly 100 a day. If you, I'd probably average out to about 100 a day, maybe a little more than 100 a day. Somebody's gotta answer those calls. So that's the reason for the, for the additional position other than the law enforcement dispatch position, is to help with those phone calls. Because we're gonna have to answer those phone calls and, you know, our 911 volume is really not gonna increase because we get all those calls now. But it's those ancillary phone calls, the after-hour stuff, their admin calls, all those things that we anticipate increasing.
I, I would just simply say, you know, the liaison, that, that's a sheriff's decision if he wants to fund it. Uh, I, I just don't see the day-to-day operation. I don't see what's changing that would justify the taxpayers of Columbia County pay another additional 80, 100, whatever it is, you know, a year. But, but that's, that's his responsibility. So that, that would be up to him. And, uh, so whatever sheriff wants to do on his dime, that's, that's fine with me. As long as it doesn't interfere with your day-to-day operation, I'm good.
It would not interfere.
Well, and that's kind of where me and David were, you know. If he needs, if he thinks he needs somebody out there.
Yeah.
He can put them out there.
Gotcha.
But, you know, uh, he, you know, I guess he's convinced he does. Did you want to talk on this?
Oh, wait, we still have more.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, David, you got it?
So all this is what we need today and the staffing level beginning in next year's budget. In addition, there are gonna be future projects that they are requesting. And I would be remiss if I didn't at least bring them to your attention.
And this is the five-year plan for the sheriff.
I am arguing that these should be included as a capital project as part of our annual budgeting for capital projects. The sheriff put them in a five-year plan. I didn't say which year each one is, but I just wanted to bring them to your attention. We spent a lot of time talking about encryption and is encryption needed? Is it not needed? Right now, the city of Lake City has a level of encryption different than the level of encryption we have. What I mean by that is there's a basic encryption in our radio system. Universal to all radios, there is a level of encryption. The city chose to purchase a higher level of encryption called AES. We chose not to do that and to buy more radios. Having said that, our fire department and our sheriff's office does not have AES encryption. So if we want to have the same level of encryption the city has so that we can all talk encrypted together at the same time during an incident, we're gonna have to spend some money. Included with that is something they call multi-key group services and OTAR, over-the-air. What that means in a simple way is right now, if you change the encryption key, you have to physically touch every single radio to change it. If you buy the group services, multi-key and OTAR stuff, Lawrence and Don can sit down at their desk and send it out and all the radios change in the field. If somebody's out sick and didn't turn on the radio with that piece of equipment, when they turn on the radio, it'll automatically be updated with the current standards, current sets. Encryption changes frequently, so it is a manpower issue. Do they need it to talk? They talk today. Absolutely. All of them can talk to each other today. But if the city's on their encrypted channels, they would have to go to a non-encrypted channel to talk to the county.
But, but shouldn't that be where everybody should be able to talk? But, but shouldn't that be where everybody should be able to talk and listen to one another?
During certain types of instances, yes. So like a school shooting, yes, you want everybody to hear what's going on.
I think we need to achieve that somehow, because.
Well, that's in the, that's in the five-year plan.
You could do that today by going to a non-encrypted channel. So you could go to a county channel, and everybody talk on the county channel, and it'd be done today. I don't want people to think their safety is in doubt, but this is something that the group felt very important. At some point, everybody needs to have the same level of encryption. So having to do that, if you did that, that's going to cost you $765,000.
That's a, that's a one-time fee.
One-time fee.
And, and we're checking into it, we think there might be some grants out there available for that.
And I, I won't tell you.
That's something that don't have to be done to consolidate, that could be in next year, you know, look for grants next year, or.
I would propose it to be a capital project.
That stuff that, this, all this is stuff that don't have to be done for consolidation, but we would let, you know, we, at some point, it needs to get done.
Yeah, I, I, I have a personal thing with this. In Jacksonville, there was an issue with this, and I think they've changed everything. I, I believe this is what it was about, is, is a guy was at a house, somebody does what I do for a living, and they, they were there having contact with the police, saying, we're trying to arrest a guy, trying to arrest a guy. Well, another section of the police department that overlapped in that area came and shot the guy, because he's beating on a man. You know, he had, he was outfitted to arrest somebody, and, and they ended up, it was kind of a mix-up. You know, a mix-up can happen between a police department, sheriff's office, or boat, or two sets of different ships, but I'm sure the sheriff is on one here, but in Jacksonville, they had kind of a mixed communication program, where one set of the police had to switch over to talk to the other, and it just, you know, it, it can.
Communication's critical in an incident.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, that is neat.
So the next thing is the GPS upgrade. It's actually being requested by the city, but I would recommend if you do it by the city, you should do it for the county. What that does is all your radios today can do GPS. The problem is, smart cop and your software doesn't do GPS. So if you're out and your man down, you're out following somebody, the dispatchers can't see the GPS locations. This would, and it's only $30,000, allow a smart cop to be upgraded, the systems to be upgraded, so the dispatchers or whoever's on the system could see exactly where that radio is at any time. Now, obviously, there's some operations that the sheriff is going to want confidentiality. You would turn that feature off.
You would have, you have to have that.
But Chief Butler feels it's a life safety, very important feature, and it's only $30,000.
You jump out of a car and run into woods after somebody, and they're beating you to death, you won't have GPS on there, because the cop, the other cop's standing around wondering where he's at, but they're yelling for him. I've had that, that, that's a scary thing right there.
So the next thing is what they call an alias update, and it also comes with a backup KMF server. Don't ask me what a KMF server is, got no idea. But the alias update, what it does is, right now, the system tells people, this is car number one, car number two, car number five, car number 10. Doesn't tell you who's in it. What the alias upgrade does, is it says, this is Chief Butler, this is Mark Hunter, this is Detective so-and-so, this is police officer so-and-so. So it's to let people know who's actually in that car, not the physical address of the car, at least that's the way it was explained to me. So that, that would cost $437,000.
To let what people know?
Uh, the dispatchers, other people with radios.
This is stuff we don't have now. We don't have this now. This is, this is a sort of a five-year wishlist.
And then finally, something called Critical Connect. Critical Connect has a one-time purchase cost of $230,000 and an annual maintenance fee of $91,000. The way it was explained to us at the meeting Tuesday, Critical Connect allows the sheriff or the police officer to stay in connect on the phone, on the radio, if you're traveling to Atlanta following a suspect, or Tallahassee, or any place outside of our district. We have something called Wave, which does that. But Wave is being phased out by Motorola, and this is the product to replace Wave that Motorola is pushing. And the biggest issue there, again, is your $91,000 a year annual maintenance, where Wave was free.
So do we pay any, I know we don't pay nothing annually for Wave, but did we pay something when we went with Motorola?
I, I could ask Lawrence, was that in the original contract as a freebie, or was it an additional cost of the contract? So it wasn't our annual contract, but they since stopped supporting it?
David, I, if, if, if this was something the county was doing, it would be on a capital project.
Yes.
And I think this should be on capital projects. We know they're going to have estimated cost of, of one and a, one and a half million dollars, and, and, and we can fund it that way. It might be somewhere we can't fund a $437,000, but you might could do a $30,000 or something like that, as long as it's a capital project, and we know we got a five-year window to, uh, to approve them in.
Correct. Our recommendation is do this as a capital project, and you can approve if the funding is available or not available, as you do your normal capital projects. It is not required to be consolidated tomorrow.
Not put Lawrence on, Lawrence, you have any input on this encryption thing, or? Yet, okay. I, I, I mean, I'm like Mr. Williams, uh, we look at it annually at our budget.
And what I did not put on the list was the radio tower in Swanee Valley, because it's not related to dispatch. It's related to coverage issues, that's strictly a county issue, and that would be, again, an annual capital project.
Such as that, David, is there any words in appropriations or anything that, is there any other avenues to fund such as that?
There are grants out there for public safety all the time. Uh, we have chosen not to pursue them, that is a political decision.
So, so, here's the thing, we're going to find some grants for some of this stuff. Uh, talking, me and David had, had a meeting, uh, Tuesday, and, uh, we're going to look for some grants for some of this stuff. Uh, there had been some discussion in the past, and basically, sheriff's office don't do grants, but when you talk of this kind of money, if there are grants available, we're going to have to do some grants.
Yeah.
So the sheriff has made it real clear, he is not interested in pursuing grants.
So this Critical Connect.
Say that again, David.
The sheriff has made it clear in the meetings that he is not interested in pursuing grant funding.
Well, if we can pursue grant funding, we're going to pursue grant funding. That mean nobody's budget have to get cut, the funding.
This Critical Connect, I know that's to be able to connect with somebody in Lake City to Atlanta, Georgia, in a radio, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Don't these guys have telephone? Don't they work?
We discussed that, yeah. You can buy a lot of, you can buy, you can buy a lot of cell phones for $30,000.
I mean, I think what this is about, though, is while they're in route, if there's something happening, chasing somebody.
They can talk on the radio back and forth, uh, to all the people, instead of just, well, I mean, you can do group calls, but you know, a cellphone, you're going to talk to one person at a time, generally.
Yeah, well.
If you're on the radio dispatch, basically, everyone can.
So in all fairness.
Ride with them for about 10 minutes on a high-speed chase, and you'll understand why a cellphone ain't the way to go.
Always done that one.
You're doing this right here, riding, yeah.
This was a very controversial issue in our meeting Tuesday. Now, not everybody was in the meeting, so, you know, we didn't get everybody's perspective. But this was a very controversial issue, and I would defer to law enforcement, because it's something that's on their wishlist.
Here comes somebody that talks all about it.
Go ahead, come on up.
Law enforcement, yay! So, um, of course, I can't speak for the sheriff on some things, but I did want to clarify a few things for you gentlemen. This list up here, it was asked of Lieutenant Don Meyer to come up with a five-year plan for the radios, uh, for the build-out for the additions. Do I need to speak up?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, so a couple of weeks ago, Lieutenant Meyer was asked to come up with a five-year plan for combined dispatch as a whole, not just the sheriff's office, for building out and adding on to our, our radios. And, and that's what this list is. It's not a sheriff's office wishlist. This is to benefit all, so I just wanted to clarify that. Uh, and then you had a question on Critical Connect, is that correct?
They were just, they, they were saying that brought up about cell phones, but.
Yeah, we, we were just talking about the cellphone versus the.
Sure. So, in, in a situation of a pursuit, because some of our pursuits do extend outside of the county and to other counties, and, um, for example, we had one pursuit that ended up on I-10, and our radio signal loses signal right about 3:01 on I-10, if you're familiar with that area. At that point, when you're in a high, high-speed pursuit, you don't know when the vehicle's going to stop, uh, or what the end result is going to be when you do come to a stop. Being on a cellphone, uh, talking to a dispatcher, relaying, or relying on that to be relayed to everyone who needs to know, uh, it's a lot easier when I just pull out my cellphone, Critical Connect or Wave, which we currently have, and I can use it as a radio, and everybody can hear me.
Still come through your cellphone.
Yes, but.
The Critical Connect will be through the radio, right?
But all law enforcement can hear me, it's on a radio system.
It's not just one person you're calling.
Rather than just the dispatcher and the time delay, and the dispatcher relating that to whoever they need to. So it, it, it's, um, it's a lot safer talking to all the other law enforcement who can hear us, rather than talking on a phone to a dispatcher. I can use this as a radio.
A bionic ear's like mine, I got mine hooked up from ear.
Yes, sir.
And, and that's another, y'all try to hear me, but I have first.
And that's just from the law enforcement perspective that's used it. It's, it's not, you know, one of those high fancy things that we think we need to have. Trust me, there's plenty of others out there, uh, but this is, uh, one of the things we need. And again, it would benefit not just us, I think the city is going to it as well, so.
Katina, when you're in, when you're in a high-speed pursuit, and you cross county lines and stuff, do y'all still stay with that pursuit?
Yes, sir.
Y'all going to pass it on to the, to the next department?
No, sir, we have a probable cause for that pursuit. It's just like any other county or any other jurisdiction that comes through our county. We can choose to participate or not participate in the pursuit to assist them. If it ends in our county, we of course are going to be there to assist and take them into custody. But if they pass through our county, we can't stop them from pursuing, because they have the right to pursue on their original probable cause.
You, you know, and, and what you were saying about the phone is, um, I have to do that. I have to call 911, like, I've had situations with y'all where somebody's been running, and it's dangerous, and I'll call the dispatch, and I'm trying to tell the dispatch, tell the deputy they're going down this road, and they're about to kill, you know what I mean? And it, it, I, I've personally done that many, many times, and it, not as much lately, but.
Well, and, and it's a lot safer for RWs, because you've got the supervisors that's listening to the radio. That supervisor can ask direct questions to the deputy that's in pursuit, you know, using his direct connect or wave or whichever it is, rather than the dispatcher having to ask the supervisor, and it just, it, it.
And to me, with the cost, one of the most important things to me that, that I see here, and, and I'm not saying this because everything is real important, is that GPS upgrade. Because when you chase somebody into the woods, and you're by yourself, and everybody's trying to find you, and you ain't winning the fight, that's a rough, that's a rough thing to be in. Because then somebody takes your gun, your, your, your radio and everything else, and leaves you laying there, we don't even know, they don't even know where you're at.
Correct, and we have GPS in our cars, uh, most of the vehicles, and, you know, most pursuits, foot pursuits, will get half mile, a mile sometimes, far away from your car.
I mean, running, yeah.
That's, that's a large.
For $30,000, that's cheap, now, to me, for a deputy that's, that has the gumption and guts to get out and run somebody, that's a, that's a big deal right there.
Okay, and then one more thing, I just wanted to clarify a little bit, and I wasn't prepared to speak on this, but since it was a topic that was brought up, uh, as far as Lieutenant Meyer or whoever, and the intended person is going to be for the liaison for law enforcement that we hope to have out there at dispatch. Uh, so currently, Lieutenant Meyer, again, if he's the, I think he's the person you've been talking about in the, the meetings, right, Mr. Robby? Um, you know, he's currently assigned to Criminal Investigations Division as a lieutenant. And the way it's structured in there, there's a captain, a lieutenant, and a sergeant. Uh, the sergeant stays busy with his duties, the captain stays busy with his duties. The lieutenant over in Investigations Division stays extremely busy with his duties. So what he's done is he's taken on the additional responsibilities as a liaison out there, and he and Mr. Tom work very well together. And I think that's one of the reasons that they are looking at him to, to be out there. But what it's also doing is it's hurting us as an agency, because it's taking him away from his law enforcement responsibilities within that division. So we do have a job description that we prepared for that. Again, I can't speak for the sheriff, that is something that he, he will present to you guys as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
And as she said, um, this was part of a five-year plan. This wasn't ever anticipated to be all year one.
Yeah, exactly, it's a five-year plan.
Long as it's a five-year plan, it's a capital project.
That's right. And, and I'm, I'm sort of like Robbie, I mean, the, the GPS upgrade for $30,000? I, I mean, you know, I'll be honest with you, I'm sitting here thinking, why don't the sheriff have this? He turned in $300,000, $600,000 last year. Why did he not buy this? Why didn't he purchase it? I mean, we would have, we definitely would have approved it on his budget, or in the money he turned back in, so. I, I'd say, I think that's a, the GPS.
There's room there.
There's no brainer, but, I mean, I think that's very important, too. You know, I, I would think, I would think that would already be in place. Come on up, Steve.
While Stu's moving up there, I don't know if you picked up on it, Kirby, but did, did you just understand Robbie say he's ran a mile chasing somebody?
I don't, I don't think that's. When the man running from you.
That was a long time ago, wasn't it?
When the man running from you come cost you $50,000, you'll run in as much as you got.
You'll find that sucked up there, won't you?
I'll do, I'll do cartwheels to it.
I thought Kirby needed an uprising down there, he's got to get sleep on me. Go ahead, Stuart.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I'm only up here to speak about this 911 dispatch consolidation. Been a long time coming. Could have happened in 2009, but at that time, I remember being in that room exactly in City Hall. Personalities got in the way. First, it was this sheriff, then it was city manager and his police chief, and then everything went up and spoke. This could have happened 13 years ago. The one thing I don't understand about this is I don't understand this liaison position, and it's a scary day when Mr. Murphy and I agree on something, a very scary day. I don't, I don't get it. Tom Brazil is an experienced police officer, you just heard him say he's retired captain. I mean, he wasn't out, you know, drinking Dunkin' Donuts for his career. He worked his way up through the ranks and became a respected police, police officer. And I don't understand this liaison thing. Everybody is working for Mr. Brazil anyway. I trust Mr. Brazil to run 911. You guys clearly trust Mr. Brazil to 911, run 911, because if you didn't, he wouldn't be there. So, I don't even understand what this person does, because you can only want one captain on the ship. So if Mr. Brazil is running 911, then I don't know what somebody's sharing his office. I mean, I, I don't know what that is, what they would even do. I, I just, I just don't get it. So I, I'm opposed to that, and I agree with Mr. Murphy and any other member of the board that, that can see absolutely no reason for this. And finally, I'd like to know where the sheriff is. Where is he? I go, I go, I go to other counties. You see, the sheriffs always show up. I mean, it's good public relations for them, if they want to have public relations. It's, uh, good to meet the citizens and be face-on, face-to-face with the people that voted their budgets. And this sheriff, he's pretty much MIA. I can't even remember the last time I saw a sheriff at the meeting, when he wasn't asking for money, or asking for more authority, or asking for something. And clearly, tonight, or this morning, he should have been here to explain all this stuff, instead of with no disrespect to the major, doing it by messenger. And that's what I have to say, and I'm looking forward, as a citizen of this county, for a combined dispatch system, finally, that works. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Two, on behalf of the sheriff, I can, I can tell you where he's at. He's at a funeral this morning, a good friend of his.
Yeah, so let's don't, you know. We don't know, we don't know. Yeah, so let's don't, you know, we don't know, we don't know.
One time I agree that.
If we don't know something, we don't know something.
So I guess what I'm asking.
You eat $12,000.
$12,998, plus, if you wanna toss in the GPS another 30, do you want me to bring that back on the 15th as a budget amendment to appropriate the money and allow us to start expending it to get ready for consolidated dispatch, if it happens?
What, okay, when you say if it happens?
Well, until you sign the interlocal agreements.
Huh?
We'll have to have interlocal agreements to make it happen. So the attorney will have to work with their attorney and the sheriff's attorney to create an interlocal agreement.
What you're saying, if it don't happen, it becomes somebody backs out.
So these improvements will help, and they'll be in place by October, but we still need to get the interlocal agreements between the city, the county, and the sheriff in place before it is done.
I would make.
Defer to Joel on that.
I would make that motion, David, to bring, didn't you just say you wanted to, you want direction?
I could use concession.
Not a motion.
I can use consensus. I just, if you want me to bring back that at the next board meeting with a budget amendment, I'm happy to do it.
I personally would say bring back a budget amendment for the $12,998, including, in addition to the $30,000, because I, as a consensus or whatever you wanna call it, I think everybody here is in agreement, said that's a life safety issue, and I could agree to that with hands down. So.
I think the board agrees to that.
I agree.
The $30,000 and the 12.
Yes.
So it's on $42,000.
Everything else go on capital project.
Yes, and I'll have to find that money in this year's current budget.
I think.
There's not any money left after this.
Is there anything else we need to discuss on that? I think we've pretty much explained it all. And like I say, board, oh, all I can say about the liaison for the sheriff's office, I'll let him explain that to you, why he needs it, because he feels that he, he feels he needs that position, you know, why, I don't really understand why, but, oh.
Chair, when will we be, when will we say we're going hot?
By October 1st is our plan.
Okay.
Yep, we wanna be, we wanna be, we wanna be consolidated by October 1st. That's why we're asking the board to discuss this today and look at this, so David can bring it back.
So Joel, is this MO you already prepared to your knowledge, or?
Mr. Kennon and I are exchanging drafts, we wanted to finalize some of these details that are being negotiated. But yeah, like Rocky said, it's sort of the last mile, but unless somebody backs out, it should all go through.
But the board of county commissioners ain't backing out.
No.
And we own.
Never, never have.
So we going hot. Okay, I don't care who backs out, but we going hot.
Oh, two minute, or three-minute comments? Anybody, anybody got anything they wanna add or discuss? Come on up.
You just should say, "Stu, come on up." You just should say, "Stu, come on up."
Stu, come on up. I don't know why you don't sit a lot closer to the podium, people have to walk some.
Good exercise. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna follow up on this subdivision information that Mr. Kirby explained, which I still really don't understand. So if I get it now, every subdivision that's gonna be built in Columbia County is gonna automatically become an MSBU? Don't the people have to vote whether or not they wanna become an MSBU?
No, they don't have to vote for it.
No.
You're not taking two seconds of your time?
Go ahead.
The reason is because the developer will own 100% of the real estate, so any voting would be, that's why the declaration, the misspelling that you called out, that's his declaration saying, "Establish an MSBU, put it on all my lots," that's what that is. So normally, there'd be a vote if they were individually owned properties, but they're all owned by the developer when the MSBU is established. This is before the first lot gets sold.
Yeah, I get it, I presume legally that's correct. Obviously, we would apparently need to have somebody advise the homeowners when they buy the house, that they're gonna have, like, living in a co-op.
Most homeowners inquire what the property tax is gonna be on the property when they're buying a house anyway.
Well, they would have to.
That'll be in that cost.
They would have to know that they're part of an MSBU.
That'll be in that cost.
Because they didn't know in Woodboro, and that's a big problem, and I predict that you guys are gonna end up buying back a lot of homes in Woodboro.
That title company had covered that.
You might, might, I don't think so, but we'll see what happens. That's, that's something that you guys need to keep in mind.
That's why we're doing.
And that's, and that's, and that's, and that's, I'll finish, thank you, if you don't mind.
That's why we're doing it.
I guess you do mind.
That's why, you're questioning what we're doing, and I understand why you're questioning, you got the right to do that, but the reason we're doing this, that you're talking about, is so we don't have no more Woodbours, and we don't have it ever happen again, because and no more people that buy a house they think is super-duper, because some engineer said it was, or a contractor said it was, and now all of a sudden it's falling apart, and we're having to pay for it.
The rule is that if you wanna speak, you need permission from the chair. That's Mr. Foreman's room.
You don't get permission from the chair.
I do ask always when I come up here.
You're not gonna correct me, Stu.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Let me, let me clear something up. I think we all heard Mr. Kirby say, this is probably gonna have to have some finesse from year to year, so I'm sure there's something we will have to add, or something we've left out, that we will see, you know, hindsight's 20/20. So, you know, we'll, we'll do what we have to do to adjust, to cover anything that comes up that we missed. But you got to start somewhere.
You can't, you can't, you can't wash the car without getting soap out.
Stu, if this will keep those two little ladies that come to every meeting almost about Woodboro North, if this will stop those things from happening, then this should be. It's just that simple. We'll, we'll, we'll be proactive. We're trying to get ahead of the curve with what we're trying to do.
This, this is one of the reasons that you accept roads after being used for two years, and I would respectfully point this out to you, Mr. Chairman, now that you've used half of my time.
We understand that's your opinion.
I would just like to finish the thought, if that's.
We understand that's your opinion.
With your permission, I'd like to finish the thought.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Wrap it up.
So, this is why, because, let's say you have a hurricane. You don't know if the surface water drainage is correct, so if you wait two years, you could have every engineer in the world sign off, but until you actually have a real hurricane and see the water flow in a subdivision, that's when you know what happens. That's just one reason. The other reason is, is that you may be rushing to judgment, is because this is a developer-friendly county, and you wanna accept roads before they've been fully tested. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, we'll leave this three-minute comment. Commissioners, y'all have anything?
I don't have anything.
Hollisworth?
I think Joel has got one little comment to make.
We'll get him.
When it comes to me.
Yeah. So, boy, I just wanna let you know that I will not be here for the next meeting, I'm going to be on a family vacation. Commissioner Williams will chair that meeting. Oh, I want y'all to know that 911 consolidation is very important to me, I'm sorry I won't be here to vote on that, but I'll put it in y'all's trust, that y'all agree with everything that's going on, and y'all will get that passed, I hope. Oh, and I will be, I'll be watching. You got anything, Mr. Murphy?
Doug?
Joe, I understand you got something, next you say it.
No. I appreciate Commissioner Phillips's enthusiasm. So y'all recall that Commissioner Phillips had brought up an issue that has been an issue in a couple of y'all's districts, where someone will acquire a piece of property, and unbeknownst to them, they've bought an illegal or non-conforming lot, and they go down to Building and Zoning, and they say, "Hey, give me a permit," they say, "Can't do it," right? And the way your LDRs are written, your Building and Zoning folks have been exactly right, they have given the right information. So I went through the LDRs, as I told you guys I was doing, and was trying to formulate a way to work those people around. And yesterday afternoon, I called Kevin immediately once, kicked myself, because I said, "Boy, if, if, if the correct petition is made," and that's the big if.
I read your email this morning, I think that's it.
If the correct petition is made, we do already have a process in our LDRs. And so what I've done, I sent you guys all a memo, I also sent it to Troy, I sent it to David and Kevin. We would like those folks to come back, and so I've asked Building and Zoning, to the extent they have information for those people, reach out to them, and I've agreed that I'll sit down and kind of explain that little nuance. We obviously can't prepare the petition for them, we can't advocate the petition, but I want them to understand what they're asking for and why they're asking for it. Because if they do it the right way, then your Board of Adjustment, if it agrees, and if it finds all the factors are present, could give them a variance that would let them get a building permit. And if we can get that done with an existing process, as you mentioned, Mr. Murphy, it's better to go with the government we already have than to create more. So I'd rather not create more regulations, not create more processes, let's try to use what's on the books. So I wanted to share that with you, because I know, I think every single one of y'all's had at least one.
I appreciate you coming up.
And then the other issue, the no-wake zones, we are continuing to work on that. Commissioner Ford, I know you'll be out, I'll send you an email, as Mr. Morrison and I develop on that, because I know we are concerned particularly with the traffic, the boat traffic that's, that might give us an opportunity to do something there. That's what I have.
Well, the river's loaded up right now, they're not gonna be.
I got you.
But when it's up, they have a major problem. David?
Um, there was something I was gonna say, I can't remember what it is, but I can tell you this, the pool heating system, they went through an RFP, ended up having to negotiate with the vendor, they're gonna be awarding that pool heating system sooner rather than later, but they're not gonna construct it until after swimming season, is what I'm told. So that means we would have to roll the money from this fiscal year into next fiscal year, or re-appropriate it whichever way the law should go.
That was $50,000?
50 plus 10.
Okay.
Because they got 10 from the TDC.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Kirby.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, I always heard imitation was an excellent form of flattery. My whole career, I've followed FDOT indexes and spec books. This was our first stab at what we presented today for the county to stand on their own and have some rules. So, all the criticism, we're trying to move forward. We're not trying to do backwards.
Let me add to that, Mr. Kirby. First of all, we get bashed, because, and we should, and it should, the people should be angry in that subdivision up there, North Town. I don't want, we have Mr. Licker telling us how terrible it is, how terrible it is, how it ever is, and Mr. Licker, I'm just saying this as a matter of point, and we're doing something to fix it, and we're being bashed for doing that. I don't know when you get, when you don't, I mean, if somebody says, "Fix my car," and we go fix the car, and then they bash us for trying to fix the car, maybe we didn't fix it all the way, but we're trying to, we're doing our best, we, you know, it just, at some point, you have to understand, we're trying to fix the problem, and things don't happen overnight, and things aren't gonna be perfect, but we gonna try to fix it, so that people aren't stressed about their homes and the flooding and water running through their house, and we're doing our best, you know, we're doing everything we can, so, I don't understand it.
Commissioner Hollinsworth, if I may, a lot of problems are solved over lunch, and I highly recommend, I'll pay for it, I think Stu and Kevin need to go have lunch together.
I think, I think a vacation would be good.
Bill's on me, Kevin. Unless you wanna take them out of county.
Maybe Kirby can take him quail hunting next year.
Stu's looking for some excitement in his life.
Do we have anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We are adjourned, gentlemen.